...to the commissioners and said, "What do you think about this? This is kind of where I'm at. Where are you at?" Several changes were submitted. And then I sent it back out and said, "What do you guys think?" And some people said yes, and some people said no, and didn't give an explanation. And then, which is more concerning than, um, than anything. Because it just, I think that we need to have discussions when people don't agree.
Sure.
Um, but then some people said they just need more time. And so kind of that's where we're at in the whole process.
Well, why don't you, why don't you bring it to our next meeting? And we can work through it together.
Well, mostly because it was time-sensitive. It was supposed to, my original intent was to kick off the new year 2014. And it's already the middle of January. And that one, you know, going through a process, being able to react very quickly would've taken a really long time, so.
Well, I just want to make sure that the, um, that if you were going to send out a document, what was, I mean, you, help me understand. You were going to send out a press release for, and what was the?
Just all about our strategic planning and process, and how we have consensus, and being unified, and having the same priorities, what we talked about at strategic planning.
Okay. We're, um, and so is Mike Taylor and Edwin Birch in our communications department working with you on that?
No. Because in the past, we've been told that staff can't work on things unless it has the, you know, comes through this formal process and, and they, and we didn't have time to do that.
Well, my only, my only thought, I, you've, you've not sent this to me, so I've not...
I know that.
Yeah, so why, um, if you're doing something with the consensus of the commission, why wouldn't it, why wouldn't it have been sent to me?
Because it wasn't done. If, if, you know, you can't, you can't decide whether something is okay or not unless you can see it. I can't just give you something from myself that would just be for me. So the goal was to get other people's input and then bring it to you and say, "Hey, what do you think about this? We're thinking about sending it out. The commissioners like it." Or the commissioner don't like it, and we're not going to send it out.
Right. Well, my only, my only invitation would be, I would think that'd be a great topic for this commission to talk about in a public session. I think it's important that if we send out a document that is a consensus document of the commission, um, then that needs to be approved in a public meeting. So people know what we're talking about, who agrees and disagrees, what the conversation is. I think that's a, a part of the commitment we have to being, um, to disclosing what we're working on. Yes?
Mayor, I mean, I just have to say, logically speaking, it doesn't make any sense to have a public meeting to approve a press release that we're going to send to the public. And it would be the first press release that's ever come through the, through the commission for approval.
Well, in turn, but if it's, if it's being developed by the commissioners, I mean, if it's being developed by the Board of Commissioners, that's an official act of the unified government. I mean, the commissioners don't act except as the Board of Commissioners. You know what I'm saying? That if you, if you come to a consensus, or you vote and say, "Well, you have six people that approve this," and you send that out, that's an official document for the unified government. That needs to be presented in public, it needs to be discussed in public, and then it needs to be sent out through our public communication means.
We're not taking action. Nobody was taking action. It's just a press release to say, "Hey, isn't this great? We all like each other, and we're getting along with change."
So it's like a, so it's a newsletter?
Um, kind of, yeah. That's all it really was.
Mayor, I, I have to say that over the years, I've never seen any mayor prior, prior to this very moment, uh, come to the commission and get approval for any press releases as they've turned out.
Staff has not pressed releases.
And I can, I can give you hundreds of examples of mayors taking center stage with the public by issuing a press release on a topic that the commission doesn't even know about.
So my question, though, is if the Board of Commissioners is having a conversation, and, and you, clearly you are, you're having a conversation.
Yes.
The public's not aware of that conversation. So there's not a, there's not a formal, I mean, the, the clerk's not working with you?
Uh-uh.
I mean, the Board of Commissioners is a formal group. There's not a, there's not an informal group of commissioners. And to say the Board of Commissioners, um, surely you know, I'm a member of the Board of Commissioners, right? I mean, so if you're getting feedback from the Board of Commissioners, presumably that would include this process. Because this process is organically the process of the Board of Commissioners. That by charter, the way the Board of Commissioners reaches consensus or decides things is in a public session. And so...
But that's not items that are for action. I mean, the public doesn't get to hear every single conversation that I have with Commissioner McGee, which is good, because we talk about our kids and all kinds of stuff that probably they're not interested in. It, you know, we have to, obviously, since sunshine laws require us to have discussions that are for action here, this is going to be public knowledge, because the idea is that in the end, we would send out the press release to the public. So it's not that something secretive is happening, and the exact opposite is the intent, that in the end, the public's going to see this finished document.
So why not bring the finished doc, bring the document as it is to this group, and let this group decide whether or not we have consensus in it out?
The group's already seen it. You're the only one that hasn't, and it wasn't going to go anywhere until you saw it. It just, just because I didn't bring everybody together at the same place at the same time and say, "Okay, let's go through it," it seemed more efficient to me, people have other lives, to just build consensus. It was going out to the public anyway. And then once it was all taken care of, instead of wasting your time, you've got a million other things you're doing, to say, "Okay, I took the initiative," I thought it was a good thing. I took the initiative to bring the commission together around this certain issue, and this is what was talked about. Where are you at with this, Mayor? And are you okay? So you actually had something to review and say yea or nay on, instead of this abstract idea that takes months of government red tape and bureaucracy to work through.
Well, there is a cost, I will say. One of the things we know, open government is slower government. There's no question that it's less efficient. There's no question that having a formal agenda presented ahead of time to the public, so anyone who's interested can attend and learn about it, is less efficient than just coming up and having topics willy-nilly. We need to publish an agenda for the public, so anyone who's interested in that topic can come. We need to have minutes of that conversation, because often, and you know this as well as I do, often a vote is taken, and the first thing people want to know is who voted which way. And so people pull those documents and want to know who agreed to this and who didn't. Because that's part of the public policy discussion. So I think it's great that you took this initiative. I would say, bring it to this group, and as a Board of Commissioners, let's, let's come to a consensus on it. If it's a, if it's an, it should be easy. It shouldn't take five minutes.
I, I just have to say, I think the idea that we would bring a press release as an action item to the commission, to me, is ridiculous. I mean, I guess in the end, if that's, that gets the press release out, that's fine. But are we going to bring every press release that we want to issue before the...
I think if the Board of Commissioners is issuing a press release, if the Board of Commissioners is acting as a Board of Commissioners, then the, the dialogue of how we get to that point is, is public record. Commissioner McKinnon?
Well, and I was one of the ones who said, "I need more time to think about this." And really, for me, this process right here is a good process. The group process is a good one. Because there are some times I might think of something and say, "Is this a good one to have on there?" And it's more efficient if I bring it up at this table and you go, "No, that's silly." So for me, I think this process would actually end up being a faster, more efficient process, and still get us where we want to go.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but what I would say is I don't think we have consensus on that. I mean, I really thought I was doing a nice, good thing, and trying to get it through efficiently and fast, and include every single person. And there was no action being taken. And we clearly, I mean, it's, and I hear what people are saying, but if we're going to really honor consensus, then, then let's, let's ask people right here at this public meeting, who thinks the way it was done is fine, and who thinks the way it needs to be done is through a formal process?
Well, and I, and I think it, it has not, you've not sent it to me.
Sure.
And so, and you've not sent it to, for public discussions. Usually when we have handouts, I mean, this calendar that I just passed out to everybody is a public document that everyone in the audience should have a copy of. Does everyone have a copy of the budget, of the calendar? If you don't, we would give it to you. So that as you pass out the draft, and this would be true of every discussion we have, if you come for the commission liaison position, and you do a bunch of homework, and these are the things that you want to see, and you give handouts to the commission, those handouts are by definition, public documents. And so we need to have copies of that for anyone in the audience, or anyone that wants it. So if you're going to talk about, "Well, what do you think about it?", we need to see it, and we need to have the public see it, and then we need an open discussion about it before we can say yea or nay. I mean, you're asking me, "What do I think about the way it was written?", and you haven't sent it to me.
No, I didn't ask you. I haven't asked you yet. I said, there's still...
Well, I'm a member, well, I'm a member of the Board of Commissioners, and you said that you wanted to ask all the commissioners, and I'm a member of the board.
Yeah.
So you don't want my input on what it says?
No, we do. It's just not ready. Mayor, I think, I...
I think the answer to this is just simply that, you know, I'll hold my own press conference. That's the way it's going to be.
The point is, the reason it's ridiculous is...
I think individually, you can hold your own press conference.
I'll just issue a press release with my name and this list on it, and point all of this.
Or we can all issue individual ones that are identical.
This is ridiculous.
Yeah, the point is, Mayor, by the, if you bring it here to a public meeting, and we all vet this whole press release, at that point, the whole thing is pointless, because the public already has the document. It's already been issued as a press release, once it's in the public agenda.
Except that it's a draft. I would say, you have, we have a right, as commissioners or mayor, to issue whatever we want. You could issue it on your own name. But when six commissioners or more act and send something out, you're making an action that's, that is a unified government document. Any unified government document you generate is public information, and my understanding is that needs to be discussed in an open forum, with everybody looking at the same document, talking about it. So if you want to send out something under your own name, so be it. If you want to send it out with six people's name on it, then we have an issue that we need to make sure we have a public forum to discuss it, because it's a unified government document. Commissioner Maddox?
Well, here, here's my issue with it, period. In, in, in October of 2013, we had strategic planning, in which commissioners sat down and brought up these issues that they had an issue with. It was Mike Kane, Commissioner Kane, different other commissioners that said, "We want to have these meetings to sit down and talk about issues that we would like to be, to be accommodated or fixed." Now, the fact that this schedule had been put together without the consensus of the commissioners who thought about the idea to put it together, that is, that is my issue. And from my understanding, different emails went to different staff members, different individuals, and the emails were not answered. And so to that point, there was a press release that was going to go forward, based on the fact that in October, we spoke about issues that we wanted to bring forward. Then you had November, you had December, those issues still hadn't surfaced. And so individuals who wanted to start 2014 off on the right note, had not been answered adequately. So the issue, to my understanding, is that we wanted to get these issues out here. So the fact that we wanted to get the issues out there, and people weren't answered, that is the misunderstanding that, that I'm having, and it's somewhat conflicting, because it's, it's becoming a public debacle right now. But, but, but commissioners weren't, weren't giving the proper initiative to bring these forward in a proper manner.
If I had this to do over again, what I would have done is, coming out of our strategic plan, I would have put together a fourth quarter to, uh, topic list, and I would have put together a first quarter topic list, so that we, because we committed the first quarter in October, thank you, we committed first quarter to budget. At the October meeting, we committed the first quarter to budget. In November and December, we had a couple of exciting issues. We spent a lot of time on T-bones, and we spent a lot of time on the BPU. And so if you think back to the way we were spending these special sessions, it's not as if we spent November and December with our feet up. I did not. I think this commission worked very hard on a number of topics that were topics that were moved forward, some we chose and some we didn't choose. But we had to deal with them. So a, a fourth calendar, uh, to your point, Commissioner Maddox, I think a fourth quarter calendar would have been very helpful, and I think a first quarter calendar is helpful. And I think we need to get a second quarter calendar put together, so that you know when your topic's going to come up, and you can work towards it. I think that's perfectly legitimate. And I'm committed to doing that. I think we need to get that calendar somewhat solidified. Obviously, there are moving pieces with stuff that comes up. But I think this kind, I will say, six years as commissioner, I never saw a calendar like this. I never saw a calendar like this that had all the topics that commissioners wanted to work on. And I never had an anticipated group of calendar. This is unprecedented, in terms of getting the topics that you've requested out in front, and to make sure that the public knows, these are issues that we're going to talk about moving forward. I will commit to you, uh, by the first of February, that I will have a second quarter draft calendar out, so that you can see when those topics are coming and what they look like. So my hope is that we can have as much transparency and clarity, so that you can see it moving forward.
Mayor, I'm offended by the fact that you would say that what we did was not transparent or open, and the implication is there. And it was. And frankly, I would tell you, I was not involved in drawing this up, and I don't care. I don't need to be. You're our mayor, I trust you to draw it up, I trust you to have the best interest of the county at hand, and I don't need to be involved. And when it was finished, when it was all pulled together by staff who helped you do it, now you're holding a meeting and you're asking us, "Hey, how are you, how are you with this?" I'm good with that process. That's exactly what happened. That's exactly what we did. Exactly the same thing. I wasn't involved in drafting this. This is overkill uncontrolled. This is about power and control, clearly. Nobody has any bad intents. Mayor, there is no shenanigans going on here. Alls we wanted, we are happy about the way the commission has turned out. Everybody was getting along. We love the way strategic planning turned out. I'll speak for myself, I think you've done a great job since you've become mayor. I have no issue with what you've done. We are all pretty smart people, and we just were moving things forward. So the only thing I'm offended by is the implication that this commission was not acting transparent or open in the press release. We were not taking action. I was trying to bring the commission together around things that we have in common. That is it.
Ironically, so that we could issue it to the public.
Commissioner McKinnon?
I think the idea of this is fantastic. I think the idea of putting out a list of priorities, goals, focus, is fantastic. Now, I had asked that we use some of our time tonight to kind of just come together, because that's the way I process. So I had, I had said, "Hey, let's take some of our time together on Thursday, we'll get it wrapped up, we'll get it knocked out, and it's ready to go." Because I had thought that we could get it out in short order, after just a quick face-to-face touch base on it. I'm hoping we can still do that. Because I think it would be great to get it out there.
There is no way for this government to be efficient and get all the things done that we want to get done, if every commissioner has to be at the table on every single work project. They absolutely should have a voice in whether the project moves forward, absolutely. But if Commissioner McKinnon wants to work personally on every single issue that, that the commission works on, that's going to slow the whole thing down. I appreciate your, your excitement and your energy to do it, but I, I'll just tell you, I cut my losses. I trust in Kane to give me great advice on union issues. I trust in Hal Walker to give me great advice in government process and legal issues. I trust now in Jim Walters to give me quality advice on what makes a quality development. I cannot be an expert on everything. So we are going to have to trust one another to bring projects forward, to move this commission along at a decent pace. This is about trust, power, and control. I'm disappointed about that. I thought we were way past that.
All right, so it's, um, you're not interested in bringing it forward? Is, is clear?
Yes, just do it.
If, if, if that's clear, then that's fine. I think that the, um, the invitation is there.
You can, it's just ridiculous.
I think, I will say this, and this is a commitment I made, and I, this is a commitment I made when I became a commissioner, and as I made the, uh, the effort to run for mayor. And the commitment I'll make to everyone at this table, and the commitment I make to the public, I have worked very hard to bring as much information to this commission. I would say, having been a commissioner for six years, I have worked very hard to make sure there is more information being given out to the commission now, um, in a concerted effort to pu, push information out to the commission on a regular basis than I've ever seen before. It's a commitment that I have in terms of open, um, communication, open lines of things. At any time that I'm going to, uh, want to move for a consensus, or for a debate on something, I want you to see it in advance, I want you to have time to talk about it. And I think that the, the people expect that when we're talking about something and coming to a consensus on something, that we're doing that in a public forum. And I am committed to continuing to push everything we do to a public forum for public discussion and a public vote. That's a commitment that I've made in this, and I think that's something that we have to hold fast to, and it's, it's something that I'm not going to give up. So, um, I'm disappointed in your interpretation, but it's your interpretation, which is fine. But we have an obligation to the citizens of this community to have every deliberation that the Board of Commission handles, and that includes myself and all the rest of us. That deliberation of the Board of Commissioners did not include the whole Board of Commissioners, and we still don't even know what it is. The public still doesn't know what we're talking about. And I think it needs to be put out in a public forum. That's a commitment that I'm going to continue to hold, and that's a pushback that I'm going to continue to make. So I think if you don't, if you're not interested in putting it out here as a draft proposal for us to work, that's fine. I think then, then it's not a unified government Board of Commissioners document. I think that's the, that's the decision that we need to make. The only unified government Board of Commission documents that we generate are generated in a public session with a called meeting, minutes, and a follow-up. That's a, that's a, that's in our charter, and it's a value that we're going to uphold regardless. So, um, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm, that's something I feel strongly about, and I'm not going to compromise on.
So Mayor, then I'll expect to see your future press releases that are going out on UG letterhead on our agenda, I assume, as well as our newsletters that go out, especially our printed newsletter that has all of our photo in it, because that's obviously a unified government document that we never see a draft of.
Okay. Certainly, we will, I think we're on, we are going to have to continue to push this process forward. But I, I want to wrap up this conversation right now. Commissioner Philbrook, go ahead, but then we can, we do have another topic, and we're at 6:30, and we're going to need to decide if we want to hear the next topic, or if we want to, um, close the meeting. Go ahead.
So, and I know you're disappointed that I didn't, uh, sign on. My lawyer told me not to, because of this very conversation right now. So I would love to have been part of it, but when my lawyer tells me not to be part of something that I can get in trouble for as a commissioner, I'm going to follow his direction, okay? And I think there are a lot of good things on that, and I'm saying this out in the open. I think there's a lot of good ideas on this press release. I don't agree with all of them. But I would love to talk in open session about it. I just can't do it any other way. That's what I pay my lawyer for.
Okay. Any other comments on this topic? All right, we, yes, Commissioner Walters?
This topic being the overall...
The overall, well, yes, the overall piece and, um, of what we've talked about in terms of calendaring.
Well, um, one of the things that appealed to me when we talked about volunteering for this additional Thursday session, was the ability to do just this, the kind of chatting without a very structured agenda. Because one of the things as commissioners, we, we really have, um, a challenge with is face-to-face time for face-to-face discussion. So this is really helpful, even though, uh, it may not seem as productive as it, as it is on the surface. So I hope that particularly February 13th and March 13th, which are the open meetings, I hope that each of those agendas can allow for this kind of free-ranging discussion, and not just become, uh, you know, more, um, day-to-day commission work. Because we would have to do the budget anyway, even if we didn't agree to have these special Thursday sessions, right?
Agreed.
So, um, I think this is great. Uh, I'm, there are a lot of topics on here I really don't even know enough about to know whether I have an opinion or an interest, like Brian said. So I'm hoping that, uh, on, especially on the February 13th and March 13th meetings, we'll just be able to have some open discussions to, to kick off or tee up some of the more formal presentations of these various topics. So...
Fair enough.
Glad we're having these meetings.
Good. All right, in terms of, it's 6:30. When we asked about the, um, meeting last week, we, folks said they wanted to go from 5:00 to 6:30. If we want to, we have a presentation ready on the, um, public radio, uh, public safety radio process. If folks are interested in continuing that, Mr. Hayes, how long a presentation is that?
Probably handle it in 20 to 30 minutes, depending on the questions asked by the commission. Remember, this is, we're not trying to do a technical presentation on a radio system. What we're trying to do is prep the commission on budget issues that you'll have to address this summer. And that was part of the process that you all adopted, and one of the reasons the mayor asked us to prepare topics that will come to you for decision this summer. Not tonight, just background, letting you know some of the challenges in a $25 million community radio system that helps Bonner Springs, Edwardsville, uh, as well as BPU and the unified government.
So you're anticipating 30 minutes?
Yes, sir.
Are folks interested in staying for an additional 30 minutes to hear the presentation on the public radio system? Or do you want a break for tonight and reschedule that?
I'm willing to hear it.
I'm here.
Same.
Me too.
All right. Let's bring the, um, group forward and have the presentation.
Gary Ortiz, Assistant County Manager, uh, is going to lead the team. We have representatives here from Emergency Management, as well as representative from Board of Public Utilities. Again, we can dive into the detail as you want to. What I've asked Gary to do is present a historical view, so particularly the new commissioners will, will understand the history and the background, and how we came to a major investment of literally $25 million in a state-of-the-art radio system for the community that handles 911, police, fire, EMS, all of our public works operations, as well as all the services through BPU, Edwardsville, and Bonner Springs.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator, uh, Mayor, Commissioners. Let me get oriented here. Okay, um, we can go real quickly here. The members of the Public Safety Committee have seen this before. I'm just going to give an overview. What's important tonight is the second portion, which is Lou Levin. He's going to give the fiscal impact. It's a timely presentation in that it is prior to your public hearing, to your strategic planning, and to your budget deliberations. So in that regard, it is timely, and we do want to keep it at the forefront of your thoughts. A lot of people have worked a long time on this. I'd like to thank, uh, Mike Baughman, who is the interim Emergency Manager Director, uh, his predecessor, Bob Evans. Mr. Hayes mentioned many of the dignitaries, uh, here tonight in support of the project. And it has been a, a complex project to engage in. Many, many conversations with stakeholders. Uh, we have comprehensive lists of all the user groups and stakeholders for those that are interested. We're not going to go into that level of detail this evening. When the project began, uh, we envisioned a state-of-the-art county-wide radio system to support public safety and public service operations in Wyandotte County. Uh, as Mr. Hayes said, um, to give a brief history of it, the current system is one that is owned by BPU and the UG, and it operates an 800 megahertz trunk radio system. Uh, there are 17 channels on it. It is analog. Uh, it operates in FM mode. The three locations of the current, uh, system are at 27th and Vernon Street, 2106 South 11th Place, and 110th and State. All of them are in Kansas City, Kansas, and that is for a reason. The original, uh, system was to serve Kansas City, Kansas's needs alone. And so there are coverage issues involved, which we'll get into as we cover this. And if this is too much detail, Dennis, let me know. Um, the, uh, you can't really see the microwave connectivity there, the, um, there they are. Okay. Um, the dispatches at the Riverview location, and as I said, the three, uh, receiving and repeater antenna are at the, the three locations surrounding that. I don't know if, with my mouse, I can show you. This is the Riverview location. That's the dispatch. These are linked by microwave to each of these locations, 27th and Vernon, 11th and Steel, and 110th. So they're all linked, and I, uh, let's see, yeah, we have that there by microwave magic.[1739.91] Now they're linked. And so that's the old system, that's the current system. The new system is anticipated to add two antenna, one, or towers, communication towers. One is at 77th and Levinworth Road, the other is at Pulford Road. So, and then we are going to hang an antenna on the Justice Center in Johnson County. So then we will have, you know, a total of seven towers that will be linked. We'll probably be able to link them here. Yes, look at that. So...
Would you just finish the 77th just now? I mean, you know, within the last month.
Yes, yes. The hardware for the system, you know, is connected on a preliminary basis. We haven't powered it up or gone live. There is a test anticipated in April, but the tests have to wait for actual, believe it or not, foliage to be on the trees so we get an accurate read on its coverage. Because, you know, obviously leaves do absorb the waves somewhat.
Thank you.
Okay, so eventually we will end up with a much better connected and redundant system. There will be two microwave linkages. One will be, you know, this linkage and the other will be the southern linkage there. And let's just go ahead and continue. There's the envisioned system. Continuing with the background, it is a 17-year-old system, but the technology is actually 20 years old. And as far as this equipment goes, that is ancient. It's not, it's at the end of its life. It's not being supported by Motorola. And Mike's predecessor, Bob Evans, used to tell me that he used to go on eBay constantly looking for old equipment that could support the system because none of the vendors sold that type of thing. And that's just not a position to be in when you're running such a critical piece of infrastructure. Last point is any major system failure will take down the entire communication system. Okay, the upgraded system will allow us interoperability. We will join the Metropolitan Regional Radio System. And Wyandotte County is the last region in the, or last area in the region to go to the digitized Mars system. And that point was made to us by our interim chief, Police Chief Henson. She reminded us that, you know, this would be a nice thing to get in, you know, jump on board with and get with the program.
Can you explain to me why we're the last to be involved in this? As active as we are in police work in this community?
You know, it's a good question. Mr. Hayes, I don't know if you want to field that.
Tom. Mr. Lynch, would you like to come to the table, please?
Commissioner Walker, in the BPU...
We need you to speak into the microphone, please.
The BPU, two years ago commissioned a study on replacing the communication system. The cost of that study estimated by Black and Veatch at $35.5 million. So it was simply a matter of getting that up on the priority list for both organizations. The need was known, the efforts were made, it was a matter of finding the funding.
All right, thank you.
The new system will have 19 channels and we were saying over 2,600 radio users. I think it's approaching 3,000 at this point. And 20 different agencies will be served by the new system. So there's value in it. We want to hold it up as a shining example of collaborative work, of the power of consolidation. I mean, this is a true example of economies of scale that can be realized through cooperation and intergovernmental activity here. Okay, so some of the goals we'll be achieving, quality radio coverage throughout Wyandotte County based on portable radios, emergency button for individual safety. And the emergency button, some of the operators in the interviews with these, with the stakeholders indicated that they would like a button, an orange button, on their radio so that in instances where like a fireman gets hit by a burning timber or goes down, or a policeman, you know, has, you know, officer down situation, they can, if they're not able to communicate verbally what's happening to them, they can press that emergency button and still be linked. And they could find the position of that individual through GPS. And that's the benefit of some of the digital nature of the upgraded system, Mr. Mayor.
Are all of these GPS enabled, all these radios?
Yes, sir.
And is that GPS capacity available to us?
Yes, through dispatch.
All of the radios will have, the GPS coordinates will be transmitted back to the master site. That information is available. How much, how fast, changes agency to agency, BPU is considered. We want to know where the trucks are. We don't need to know, but every few minutes, maybe five, 10 minutes. The police, on the other hand, want on the spot right now. I want to know where everybody is at every instant.
Right.
So we have to see how much traffic that's going to need and how that's going to be served, but it is anticipated to be live, yes.
Well, and one of the more mundane, though, interesting usages is I believe Kansas City, Missouri, a citizen can go online and track where the snowplows are and see where they are and where they're working towards a city. I mean, if our public safety has this, presumably we could post the snowplow routes that are going on and our citizens could see that during a snowstorm to see what's happening. Is that a capacity that we would have with this radio system?
That's up to the software. The hardware will have the GPS and the information will be there. What packages can pull out that information and what you might want to limit it to. For example, just the snowplows, not the police cars, is going to be up to the software and how that's designed to pull it out and be accessed. There is nothing in the current radio project that anticipates using that in this form. We're pulling out the GPS data. Go ahead.
You heard Mr. Lynch from BPU's worked on the project, mentioned $35 million. That was with bells and whistles and a whole bunch of stuff. Let me just finish the point. We've had to trim a whole lot to bring this in at a lowest possible cost possible. Mayor, whether, Tom, regardless of the number, the fact is we've had to have departments trim off packages that they would have liked to reduce the cost to an absolute bare-bones project.
And what's bare-bones cost?
Lou?
$25 million.
$25 million for bare-bones, okay. Keep going, thanks.
Okay, interoperability, what that means is it allows you to avoid the Tower of Babel phenomenon, both amongst your own departments and in the event of a catastrophic incident where others come in from outside jurisdiction. Mike's predecessor, Bob Evans, used to tell me stories about like the tornado situation that hit here and the flood, and also the flood of '93 incident where our own departments, you know, are trying to work on a joint disaster situation and are unable to communicate with each other. You know, this interoperability, because it's a trunked system, allows people to go to common areas and discuss things encrypted and privately in the public interest. So, some subscriber units need to be intrinsically safe. I think some examples of that are the firemen, I think, have like big gloves that they wear sometimes, and so they need larger buttons. Some of them have to be hardened so that if they're dropped in a wet situation, they don't get, they don't, you know, fizzle out. Some confined spaces have gaseous emissions, and so if there's a spark caused by the radio, then all of a sudden, you know, you've caused an explosion and things like that. So these types of situations all had to be considered in designing the system. Okay, as I said, it'll enhance interoperability to the public safety and external entities. All fire stations will have new paging systems. Bonner Springs and Edwardsville will be brought fully into the system for coverage. Dispatching improvements should facilitate future computer-aided dispatching. And the last point really has to do with, again, the digital nature of the upgrade because we'll have, it'll be digital in its nature. The next generation of 911 will have like some mapping components to it. The computer-aided dispatch will have, will be able to, you know, see positions through GPS and have mapping, you know, capabilities and that type of thing. So there's just enhanced record management and it will even include a new voice recording You can read the project elements there. I'm not going to insult you by reading them for you, but, you know, it's just an upgraded system that will really benefit many, many of the jurisdiction, or entities within our jurisdiction. Again, there's the coverage area inside, and this isn't showing up as well as it did on my computer, but the new system really envisions 95% coverages, or coverage. And some of the small areas that are not covered on this map appear to be dark, black spots up there on the north, it looks like to me, and some on the southwest corner of the map there. But basically, they are private property, high areas, large rural lots and things like that, that, you know, probably our people with the radios won't be on to. And so that type of coverage will suffice. Yes, sir.
How is the cost apportioned with Edwardsville and Bonner?
Actually, because of an agreement that was signed, that is actually a county expense for, to provide that type of, those types of services to those jurisdictions. So, but the system is on a 75-25 split, where we have 75% and the BPU is covering 25%, you know, based on...
Is our current system under the, is our current 911 system on the county side?
Yes. Okay, and this, that's our system there, that's Wyandotte County in the dark green, and it, this shows how it will be, become part of the regional, Mid-America Regional Council.
Will it be able to get communications all the way to Cass County?
Yes, sir. And before, if we would have gone outside of our jurisdiction, we couldn't even talk to ourselves, let alone our neighbors and friends. And so this, you know, it just increases, you know, communication capacity a tremendous amount. Okay, just to hit the few points, so the project, you know, in anticipation of your budget deliberations, the project is critical in supporting governmental services, fundamental to safeguarding life and property within the jurisdiction, upgrading critical information infrastructure, and will serve the county for a generation. So that's why we wanted to bring it to you before you recess into your deliberations so that it does receive the priority that we feel it deserves.
How do you project financing this?
Lou, that's the second part of the presentation and Lou's going to cover that. Yeah, that's fine. And so in...
I guess I'm interested in if we're going to have to take the hit all in one year or spread it out over time.
I see, yeah. Lou will visit with you about that. In presentations, they always say end on a high note, and so with that, I'm going to throw it over to Lou and...
Let him take the low note. So Walters and then Philbrook.
Yeah, I don't want you to leave yet.
Okay.
Just a detailed question, following up on what Hal asked. I saw there that Bonner Springs and Edwardsville, we're going to receive some equipment upgrades. Now, is this, that equipment all part of this program or would they have to purchase equipment separately from this program?
They're included and we're purchasing the new equipment.
So all the emergency services, equipment for Bonner Springs and Edwardsville is part of this?
All the emergency and I believe even some of their operational radios are included as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Philbrook.
Okay, well, I want to thank this group because they had to go above and beyond the call of duty a little bit because I had a community concern about one of those towers. And they took care of the concerns, had the tower changed so it's safer for that area. And they're working very diligently, and that's the one off North 77th and Levinworth Road. And so they now have a tower there that collapses upon itself as a guideline tower. And I think it's the only one in the group, is that correct? And so they, yeah, and they're putting additional bushes around and everything to make the community around there happy. And it's a piece of property that BPU had.
Puffer.
You know, yeah. It's one that BPU owned and already had something on it. So I want to thank you publicly, you know, I appreciate all your help because sometimes it's not too easy to make the public happy.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Levin.
Maybe it's up at the upper right. Yeah, I'm trying. We're searching for the file that we had here. Nope. No. Yeah, it's there. Yep. To the second slide. Yeah. Okay, sorry for that slow start, Mayor Commissioners. I'm just going to give you some highlights as it relates to the financing of this project. As it was stated, it's a significant expense, $25 million. We're really, we've allocated the cost among using two different tools, financing tools that are available to us, and you see those up there. We issued debt last year through utilizing the Public Building Commission. And the Public Building Commission is a tool for really essentially building structures. As Mr. Ortiz stated, that this project's being financed on the county side of the budget or ledger because it, what's being provided is to not only Kansas City, Kansas, but also Bonner Springs and Edwardsville. And the county has limited financing tools. It doesn't have as much flexibility as the city sided under state authority. So, but what we were allowed to do is utilizing the Public Building Commission, we financed, and you see below, various expenses related to facilities, the tower, any building structural related expenses. So we issued that debt last year and I believe it was March of 2013, a $10 million bond issued over a period of 15 years. Our first scheduled debt payment will actually be in 2014. The second part of the financing is general obligation bond debt. And what we're allowed to do on the county side is equipment-related purchases and significant equipment costs, the subscriber units or the handheld radio devices. There's some workstations that are included in the equipment expenses. And what we're going to have, and we issued last year in temporary notes approximately $12 million. We spent about $10 million of those dollars and we'll have a bond issue. And our bond issue financing coming up later this month or actually on February 6th, we'll be requesting the ability to sell $10 million in geo-bond financing for this project. The last item is we'll still have temporary notes for about $5 million of expenses that are yet to occur this year to round off that $25 million. One other point I wanted to mention is, and Mr. Ortiz referred to it, is the cost sharing. These expenses, we've reached an agreement, we actually signed a memorandum of understanding with the Board of Public Utilities that 75% of the costs associated with this debt will be incurred by the Unified Government and 25% by the Board of Public Utilities. On the final slide that I have, okay, some of those, well, actually those numbers are a little hard to read, but anyways, I'm showing you totals on the County Bond and Interest Fund, and that's going to be our source of financing for this project. And you see a basic financial... And you see a basic financial statement. We have a beginning fund balance, revenues for the year, expenditures, and then ending fund balance. If we turned, if you can read the twenty thirteen numbers, we started the year with about three hundred and two thousand dollars, as beginning fund balance are showing our estimated revenues and expenditures, and we're projecting that we're going to end this year with approximately a little less than five hundred thousand as an ending fund balance. Going to twenty fourteen, and this is the twenty fourteen budget that was approved by the commission, and if we look under the expenditure line item, you see Public Building Commission, and that line item's eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That is the debt, the first-year debt payment associated with the debt financing that occurred last year. So that, that debt amount of approximately eight hundred and twenty thousand will occur over the next fifteen years for the Public Building Commission side of it. Up above, under revenues, you see a BPU payment, and that is their share of that debt. They're getting a, BPU is actually receiving a credit for cell tower construction that of approximately, I believe it was, I think somewhere around five hundred thousand. It was, it was not, it was a, I'll say, a specialized part of the construction that they incurred. So we actually, we had enough beginning fund balance that we were able to make without really impacting the mill levy in twenty fourteen. At the bottom line there, you see the mill rate for the respective fund. In twenty thirteen, points, zero point seven nine six, the final rate for twenty fourteen was, is just slightly higher, approximately eight tenths of a mill. And however, our issue that's going to come before us is we're going to need to increase that mill levy in twenty fifteen as we add the additional layers of debt. We have the general obligation bond debt of ten million that we're advancing this year, that's going to add an additional eight hundred eighty-three thousand in debt, and then, I guess a couple other lines, I'll explain what those are. Those, you see a line, lease payments and debt payments. That's debt not radio-related, but that the county has incurred previously. There's been a couple construction projects on the county side contributing to the debt payments. We've had a legal judgment that we incurred in twenty fourteen that's reflected, or in twenty thirteen, rather, that's going to add some additional debt for a four-year period, twenty fourteen through twenty seventeen, actually. And then the lease payments would be for other equipment that the county owns that we purchased under a lease arrangement. So anyways, the big numbers that you see are the PBC debt, the GEO debt. In twenty fifteen, we're estimating approximately one point seven million, and then when the final phase of the debt is completed, or project's completed this year, we're going to add additional debt, and so you can see we're up around the range of two point one million on an annual basis. And you see the impact on the budget. What we're estimating, we're going to have a little over a one-mill increase on the county side in twenty fifteen, and an additional two mills thereafter. The, both the PBC debt and the GEO debt are financed over a fifteen-year period. That's what we're allowed to do based on the asset life of, of the equipment and structures, and it's simply a cost that, as we've authorized this radio project and went forward with it, that, that we're going to occur in the future. There's not a lot of latitude on it.
So your expectation, as you come forward with the budget for twenty fifteen, is that you're going to recommend a mill levy increase on the county side of one mill, is that right?
It's one point one mills on the county side specifically for the bond and interest fund. There are other taxing units within the county side of the budget, the County General Fund, County Health Fund, and...
Now, is a mill, is a mill valued the same on the city and the county side?
Slightly, slightly higher on the county side, a greater assessed valuation, but it's approximately one million dollars on the county side.
So the option, and this is something that's very good to know coming in, because of the commitment to this radio system, we're looking at a little over a million one increase in budget on the county side, or we reduce the cost by a million one in other areas to accommodate this, correct?
That's, that would be correct.
And the following years, we would need to look at an additional mill?
Yeah, I guess what, what we're doing is we're holding, actually, with the amount of revenue that's generated by one mill constant, so if we have, I'll say, increases in assessed valuation, that, that might, we might be able to reduce the mill rate requirement.
Okay. But the piece that's important about this is, we're looking at, for next year, a million one in increase in costs on the county side by virtue of getting plugged into this, and an additional million on the county side in future years, in out years, is that right? As it stands now?
No, on the, it's two tenths of a mill. We're going on from...
I'm sorry.
Twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen, from one point nine mills to two point one mills.
Okay, so the, the big increase that we'll see would be in twenty fifteen, for the twenty fifteen budget. So that's a million-dollar piece that we're going to have to account for in our budgeting this year, either increase the mill, increase the revenues, or decrease costs in other departments. Is that right?
Those would be options, yes.
May Mayor add to that discussion? There's an item on next week's commission agenda that will show up. It comes from the Kansas Association of Counties, and it speaks of mortgage registration fees. The reason this is important, that generates one point four million dollars for the Unified Government in county funds, county general funds. And the county fund is the most difficult fund to manage, as Lou pointed out a few minutes ago. It's much smaller, and it has much fewer options for revenue generation. You'll be being asked next week to take action on a statement to the Kansas Legislature not to eliminate that one point four million dollars in mortgage registration fees. That number in Johnson County is fourteen million dollars, so this is a hard-hitting issue. Since we already knew that we were going to be wrestling with this issue for the county fund on decisions we've made to invest in the community-wide radio system, and seeing the potential of one point four million dollars disappearing at the discretion of the Kansas Legislature this spring, it makes it very challenging as you enter into the summer budget process, and more complicated than just dealing with the radio system. So that's one of the reasons we wanted to get this before you now. As a matter of record, we are not recommending, at this time, a tax increase. We're simply saying that is the level that would be required to meet the debt service for this project. There are other options, and we'll be working on those other options in the coming months, but it will be really difficult if the legislature removes the one point four million dollars in revenue from the mortgage registration fees that we currently get. It'll just compound this challenge of how, how to provide the service, how to cover the debt service. Community needed the radio system, that decision was made, it will be operational, will provide the protection. But now the challenge will come, and we'll see this a couple weeks out, on February thirteenth, when the Jail Population Committee comes before this group. You'll have the chief judge, you'll have the district attorney, and the sheriff all here to talk about issues in the county fund that impact the overall county fund. So if there are better ways to do things more efficiently, we can save costs in jail operations or in other operations, that can go, then those savings could go to cover this debt service amount. And Lou, I know I've taken a liberty, this is in, this is in the bond and interest fund, not the county general fund, but there are ways, and I know Lou will correct me later this evening, of how, how to transfer, but I'm talking now the entire county, all funds, not just the bond and interest fund, which Lou's focused on here.
Yes.
Question?
Yes.
One of your earlier slides had about a four point eight million dollar charge for twenty fourteen. You said it was equipment expenses, I believe?
Yes.
So that's not included in this?
It's included, it's reflected in the twenty sixteen number. If you go back.
Okay.
Doug, if you go forward again, back to that, the one slide.